Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We're a little bit behind schedule, but we're right as still. We now have the police officer here who will tell us what's going on in the neighborhood, and then we'll get into the part of the meeting. This is Officer Webb, who will get, he's not been here before, so be nice to him.
Good evening, how are you guys tonight?
Great.
Well, I'm Officer Webb, I'm one of your local officers that's been assigned this year to work the Oak Park District. There's been a lot going on within the Oak Park community over the last several six months, I would say, a lot of changes, a lot of blight issues, the police department's been trying to work on, trying to focus on, as well as, I don't know if most of you recall, but some of the shootings had increased a few months ago. We've been hitting that really, really hard, along with our gang units, and shootings are down, and gun arrests are increasing. We've made a lot more arrests and gotten a lot more guns off the street, most recently. Last night around 11 o'clock, we got a couple guns off a couple guys in Oak Park. So, it's always good to get guns off the streets.
They were in the park, you said?
They were in Oak Park, over near Thirty Second and W Street. So, we were able to get them in custody after short foot chase. In addition to that, our officers here, within the Oak Park District, have been trying to reach out, not only to the residential community, but to the business community, and talking with the local businesses, reaching out, trying to get to know some of the business owners along Stockton Boulevard, Broadway, some of the major thoroughfares, in order to try to see what we can do better, how we can help them, and what are some small changes that they can do to help prevent crime in front of their businesses, whether that's adding some surveillance cameras, increasing lighting, and working with us in partnership to try to solve some of the local issues that have been occurring over the years. Does anyone have any questions for me?
The police department said that the police are stretched really thin, and about all that they can do proactive now is go after the gangs for the little vile people. Is that true?
The police department is very thin. We're in the process of hiring, but as most people know, it takes time to hire and to get an officer on the street. You have a long hiring process, along with a six-month academy a lot of times, and then up to an eight-to-nine-month field training program before you actually see that officer on the street. So, yes, we are thin, we are trying to increase our numbers, we're trying to address the most important issues and most violent issues first. So, right now, part of the department's main focus has been focusing on the increase in gun violence. We're trying to reduce that, which has been, has been done over the past month, month and a half. We are getting more of the gun issues addressed, but we're also trying to be proactive when we can in between calls for service on local neighborhood complaints, when we have the time to do it, but we are stretched, then you are.
Like drug houses?
You name it, we're trying to address it. Drug houses is one, vacant properties is another, homeless, there's a lot, increase in homeless population due to the downtown core, they're trying to push them out to make way for the new arena, so we're trying to address certain issues.
Yeah, they pushed them here once.
Any other questions?
So, the homeless is getting, having more of a homeless population in the area now, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we've always had homeless issues, and we always try to address and work with the homeless community as best we can.
Yeah.
But there has been an increase, not necessarily an increase in the actual population, but an increase in the calls for service, because now they're in areas that they weren't necessarily before.
Okay.
So, it's trying to address those issues and trying to work with the homeless community, as well as the neighborhood community to come up with a long-term solution, and that's what some of our officers are trying to do right now, especially in the Oak Park area where we are seeing an increase.
Well, you're supposedly working with the church, if I think Shavel, I mean, that Little League Hall is involved in this, and so, it's along the streets, they want, they're not breaking into vacant properties and destroying your property.
Right.
That's what they do.
There has been an issue of that in the past, and our department has kind of focused on that.
It's a big problem.
Over the past several months, and the property crimes in that sense have been dropping because of our attention to it. But it's an ongoing thing, it's a step-by-step process, and we're doing the best we can to achieve the ultimate goal of coexistence between the homeless population and residential business, as well as the police department. Well, if there's no other questions, you have a wonderful evening.
I have a question.
Sure.
We continue to put more dollars and revenue into the police department for our communities. My question is, when do we get officers of diversity and color? Not only that, when do we get officers back in this community to work with our, and around our youth, sports programs? These, these things that have been taken away, and then that old feeling exists today, that's why we have a lot of finger pointing about which way in our community this happened today. We have to find something to take, take that away, and that's something that the police department and, and now the city hall, you guys haven't came up with yet. But all the weight is buried on people like me, as a volunteer, that year after year continue to struggle with these youth around here, and try to give them something positive, you know, to direct themselves to, but at the same time, when the Little League and all of these other programs are going, wherever you guys have to come and talk to you, they need to identify so they can see the friendly side of you, instead of seeing the negative side, and that's the important part right now, so that...
I agree a hundred percent, we do need to do a better job at that. Right now, due to staffing being so low, we have to focus on patrol is our number-one focus, that's why we have detectives coming back into patrol, we have specialty units coming back into patrol to help us out because we're so short. And like I said, the hiring process is a very long process, it takes up to two years just to get one officer on the street, and our department probably has an attrition rate due to retirements, injuries, and other reasons of twenty-five to thirty officers a year, so we're playing a catch-up game. At our peak, we were around eight-hundred-and-four officers, I believe now we're somewhere around maybe six-hundred sworn, where our goal is to get up to hopefully seven-hundred-and-four, seven-hundred-and-five officers here in the next few years, couple of years, which will mean, once we have more officers in order to properly staff patrol, detectives can go back to doing detective stuff, and specialty units can start focusing on the issues that you're talking about, and we can start getting officers and sending them to programs such as what you spoke about with football and some of the other Little League processes. Right now, we just don't have the staffing, we would love to represent it and be at every event we could, but we have to use our resources the best we can until we get fully staffed.
Is part of the reason you're so short-staffed is due to layoffs over the last few years, as well as retirement?
Retirement's has taken a big impact of it. Layoffs did happen, we hired back as many of the officers as we could get back that didn't already have other jobs, we've already passed that. Now, we're strictly on the point of trying to hire officers to make up for all the losses that we've had due to retirement and attrition. So, we're looking to hopefully get back to about seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-four officers in the next few years, but it's a long, long, long process. Yes, ma'am?
With regard to the diversity in Oak Park, and simply are, by the census, the most diverse neighborhood and city in the whole United States, and we compete with Paris, France for having the most trees, but the whole thing is, one of the things that stimulated our minority youth to apply for a peace officer position in life has been the pop officers. And so, my big question is, when do we get our pop officers that do come back and do come to our youth and do celebrate our youth in Oak Park?
As far as the pop officer position, our department is shifting from a specialty unit being pop officers to having every officer that's on the street being trained as a pop officer. So, instead of just having, you know, one, two, maybe three specialty people, and that that's what they do, they're trying to train and give the patrol officers that are out there that you see day in and day out, they're trying to give them that information, that training, so that every officer should hopefully be a pop officer. And once staffing gets up, we will all be trained in that, and we will all be able to help out and do some of the resources, and be more involved in some of those type of issues that you raised, as well as the Little League and the other bits, so that the youth can see a different side. I know personally as an officer, you know, we go out, we do make arrests, and it is tough on the youth to see that, they coexist and work with the community to solve the overall issues, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you very much. I told you we were friendly on you. Okay, let the meeting begin. My name's Michael Boyd, I'm the president of the Oak Park Neighborhood Association. I'm paying extraordinarily well for what I do, probably earn about every zero penny that I get. We're all a lot, we're all a bunch of volunteers who are part of OPNA, so you're welcome to get involved. Let's first introduce the rest of the board who's here, but before I do that, I want to introduce Eli, I don't know your last name, Eli.
Oh, Nolosco. Uh, Nolosco?
Eli Nolosco is a student at Sac Hi who's videotaping this, our very first media videotape. So, if we can make it work, we'll get it up on YouTube and start doing this for the folks who can't get to the meetings. So, when you see us walking toward the cameras, because we're trying to get closer to the mic, so Mr. Cooper and Shanir, remember the mics over there, the worst part about this is the mic. Okay, I've introduced myself, the vice president is somewhere here. Stand up and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, I'm Ron Delmon, vice president.
I'm Delmon, secretary.
Who else? Jared.
Tamika, oh.
Reverend O'Dea, board member.
Tamika, our senior speaker.
Summer Hutter, remember? Our newest one, our newest board member.
Where's Derek? Derek's here.
Board member.
Yeah. Maryka's a student at Sac Hi and just joined our board two months ago, right?
Yes.
I don't think you hear Jared, he's a volunteer, Jared. If you want to know any way to get involved, you got five minutes a month, or ten hours a month, or a lot more, talk to Jared, we've got a lot we can do if we work together. So, I know we had a couple quick announcements, Amanda had one, and Terry, no, there's Terry. Amanda, why don't you go ahead and give yours real briefly, please?
So, my name's Amanda Dodd, I'm a volunteer here with a group in Oak Park that, you guys might have seen it on Facebook recently, we're working to take down chain-link fences, particularly on neighbor, or on streets that are like solid fences. And we're trying to, our goal is to open up the space and show how open and welcome our community is. So, I have a sign-up sheet in the very back at the volunteer table, if you guys would have a chain-link fence that you want down, input your contact information, we'll contact you and take it down, or if you want to be on our team, we need more people, it usually takes less than an hour to take down a fence, and we'll just shoot you an email and say, "Hey, can you do it Tuesday night at whatever time?"
Does it take a lot, or just...
Anything, yes, anything.
So, if someone are taking this around our house, can we take it out?
Anyways, there's a sign-up sheet, if you have me, or if you have questions, you can contact me off of my email contact information. Not all the fences, there's too many fences, I mean, everyone's gonna have it.
We look like we have Tim and Terry, Terry, a Tim and Terry show. Terry is a former board member, by the way.
Okay, but I am a current resident, and I am the executive director for the Oak Park Business Association. What we're trying to do is drive people into Oak Park, not out. Okay, repeat.
Into Oak Park.
So, what we're doing on Sunday, noon to six, is we're gonna have a multicultural event, which is gonna be truly representative of our community in a lot of different ways, and so, let's start with vintage cars, and bounce houses for kids, and vendors and various things like that, but we're also gonna have seven performances of Latino, two Latino organizations, samba, a Polynesian dance, African drums, Japanese drums, and it's gonna go all day, and then the wrap-up is gonna be Mercy Me, so anybody know about that band from Sacramento? They are hot, they're gonna wrap it up. We've got a half-a-block-long tent and a beer garden right next to it. So, consequently, you'll be in the shade, listening to some super stuff, and it's gonna bring people in to meet other people, so come out, meet your neighbors, meet people that you don't know, and a special surprise on Fourth Avenue. You know where Fourth Avenue is, anybody?
Where?
Near the new Oak Park Brewery. You know where that is? Come on, you guys, business is in Oak Park. Anyway, we're gonna have an example of the Gather. The Gather is gonna be on second Thursdays throughout the summer, to come out, have a craft beer, have a beverage, have a seat, have a conversation. We're gonna close off Third Avenue behind...
US Bank.
US Bank, thank you, Dana. And then we're going to have the art gallery open, and we're going to just have a great time, music, beverages, community. That's gonna be second Thursday of June, July, August, September, October. And we want to thank the Oak Park Business Association Board, that they're not all here, but Stuart Eldridge is the, the chair of that, and a lot of people are here, like Sharon, on the board, and Michael Luna, on the board. So, these are community members that represent a wide variety of people, and I want to say that, over the years, that it's been a lot of fun doing my job. Now, Kimberly doesn't have such a great fun job.
Because I need to ask for money.
But I enjoy watching her.
Okay, so...
So, I'll start, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Wow, generous.
That's right.
All right, so, we're all volunteers here, we all have to pay for the food and everything, so we hope that you enjoyed it, and thank you so much to Tom Sumter for bringing the pizza. So, give what you can and be generous. Thank you.
So, I got one quick announcement, I know I got to come and talk to you guys last month about the progress the schools have made over the last ten years in Oak Park. If you don't know, my name's Jim Shavel, I'm the superintendent for St. Hope Public Schools. We run Triumph, which is a preschool, PS7, Oak Park Prep in Sac Hi. There is a flyer on your chair that said the St. Hope Showcase, that's happening not this coming weekend, but the next weekend, so there's always something awesome happening in Oak Park on the weekends. Last month, I shared a lot of numbers, now you can come out and kind of see what the kids do in terms of their talents, so there'll be our Best of Sac Hi art shows going on, we'll have food trucks out there, there's a, there's a talent portion of it for performance, so we'd love for folks to come out, bring your family, there will be a kid zone, if you ever heard of Chalk Up, Chalk It Up, which happens on Labor Day down at Fremont Park, we'll have Chalk Up Sac Hi out there in the front, so free chalk out, the kids can come draw whatever they want, or adults, you can come draw whatever you want as well. So, it should be a good time, but grab a flyer and come check it out on May tenth, that's second Saturday in May. Thank you.
Thank you. One more announcement, I believe? Two more, group read?
Sure.
Hey there, everybody, my name's Sean, I am the campaign manager for Mark Johansson, who is running for state assembly in this district, District Seven, and he is having a free barbecue that everyone is invited to next Saturday, May tenth, at El Chidai Church in the parking lot. So, I would love if I could see everybody there, again, free, it's in Oak Park, I've got an address for you on the side, so if you come up to me afterward, I can make sure that you have all the information that you need to get there, and I would love to see you.
What, what time is it?
Oh, sorry, eleven AM. Eleven AM, thank you.
Not too brief, you've got a trouble time. One more.
Hi, my name's Dave Tumayo, I'm a twenty-five-year resident of the Fruit Ridge area, I'm running for the SMUD board to represent Oak Park, Tahoe Park, all of the area, all the way down to Meadowview and the Sumney River College. I, I know you've got a long night in, in, in front of you, but the two things that I want to accomplish on the SMUD board, one is to make sure that SMUD maintains its national leadership in promoting green energy, and two, that all of its programs are accessible to and better participated in by all of the communities in Sacramento, so making sure that energy conservation is, is something that SMUD promotes and is successful at in neighborhoods all over the city. The election's in November, and I promise I'll come back and, and another time when I have more of a chance to talk to you folks. Thank you.
Okay, first item, if you've got one of these, please turn it on vibrate or off, thank you, and if you don't, you have to buy the pizza next month. And by the way, next month, most months, we meet at the Food Bank on, at thirty-three thirty-three Third Avenue, but they have, they're out in retreats, so we're here tonight. So, please remember, next month, we'll be back there. And thank you to Old Soul for the coffee, Tom for the pizza, Kimberly, I'm sure, for the food, some of the food, so thank you all of them, please. We're now gonna get into the...
I just, I'm sorry, I just put in a couple hundred quotes, but the Farmer's Market starts on Saturday, so we'd love to see you all out for that.
What time?
Starts at nine, ninety-one, on Saturday.
Farmer's Market, Saturday, go, it's a lot of fun. Flies apart. Flies apart. First, I want to make sure everyone understands, OPNA is now an official 501(c)(3), so we would, yeah, 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 it's a big deal. But it also means we have to be very careful in endorsements and taking any political positions, so we do not, we do not endorse candidates. Tonight, we're here to introduce the candidates to you and let you make up your own mind. Before we start, I want to ask, why, why do we come to these meetings? And I've got the answer for you, you don't have to answer that, I think because we're all seeking, we're all seeking community. We all want community, because we know in Oak Park, it's easier to cooperate than to compete, we know that innately in our bones, I think somehow we know it, we know that life can be tough enough, but it's so much easier when we help one another, so we come to meetings like this, because we want to change, we want to create that change, that we know we need not only here, but throughout the nation, throughout the world, we're moving to a world where we can cooperate, we've learned from the animal kingdom, they don't merely compete and eat each other, they cooperate much more than they compete, and we can learn that and we can teach that. We're, I think, we're at a pivotal history in, in Oak Park right now, pivotal moment in history, because we are, as Jones said, the most diverse community in the nation, and lately, we've been hearing the ugly gasps of racism throughout the country, and if we can learn here how to quell that ugliness, we have a lesson to teach the entire nation, and we can do that. Most of us in this room live here by choice, and it's because we have a diverse community, which is what we love, we live here not in spite of diversity, but because of diversity. And I think we have a great lesson that we can teach other people, and that's why I think this election is so important. We want to find the right candidate who will represent the ideals, the goals, the aspirations, and the lessons that we have to teach to the city council. So, before we begin, introduce the two candidates, Tamika will lay up, let you know a few ground rules and generally how we want this evening to go. Tamika.
All right, so, a lot of you have submitted your questions for the candidates, and some of them are very specific, but because this is a discussion, we want to kind of broaden it and make sure that each candidate has a floor to speak on and a case to make. So, we have a list of different questions, from jobs, to white, to crime, to youth, touching on those different subjects that each candidate will have opportunity to address. We want to keep the answers pretty short, we don't have a whole slew of time, but we just want your answers to be concise, to the point, and relevant. If you do have additional questions or would like some clarity, or clarification on one of the answers given, go ahead and submit your question, there's our little cards here on the table. Submit your question to us, we'll post it on the OPNA website, and it'll be available for both candidates to respond. Make sure you leave your contact information as well. Anything else?
Yeah, well, also, we, all of the questions that we got, we, Tamika and I went through and tried to get the sense of what people are asking, what their intention is, we're gonna put the original questions online, so if the candidates want to go and answer those in more detail, they're certainly welcome to, we'll send them to you directly also, answer if you feel you didn't get enough of an answer tonight. The format is an unusual kind of a format, our goal is to make sure we get to know Mr. Cooper and Mr. Shanir, and where they stand on issues, and how they represent us, so, as Tamika said, we're not gonna be top clock watchers, we want them to answer the questions, and then if we feel they're not doing a great job with moderator, we'll say, "Well, what about this, what about that?", and then if the candidate says, "I really need a little more clarification from you", we're gonna let them do that also, we're not gonna let either one dominate, so if Tamika does that, it means you're getting a little wordy, or if one of the board members stands up and does that, you're getting a little wordy, so... So, it's gonna be a probably informal meeting, because we probably want to know the candidates. Pardon me? Okay, so...
So, we would like to introduce our district's five candidates, Mr. Ali Cooper. Thank you. And Mr. James Fear.
I thought we might have to sit down for the camera. Anyone have a coin, let me flick it and see who goes first?
Oh, one, one comment, you, can you guys hear back there? No. So, when you, you are welcome to come forward, but the candidates, you know, it's, it's a long time to stand the whole time, so, we'll have, go ahead, and when it's their turn to answer, they'll come up to the podium so that you can hear them. It is very echoey in here, so if that doesn't work, then we'll go back to using our regular unamplified voices.
We're flipping the same tapes for his face.
Okay, whose head's whose tail?
Go ahead, call, what do you call?
I yield to the council. What's he called?
What number am I thinking of? Give me the number now.
Oh, we got a quarter. Tail.
And I'm gonna tell you what number I'm thinking of.
Heads or tails? All right, Tamika's gonna ask the first question, Mr. Cooper will get the chance to talk.
No, I am using my cell phone, because I'm trying to...
I'm just trying to... So, Tamika will get the first question, but before we do that, each candidate's gonna get like five minutes to introduce themselves to us. Who's quarter? Oh, we're going, I'm in the basket, like moms.
So, Mr. Cooper, if you could go ahead and take a few moments to introduce yourself.
Oh, did I win the talks?
Yeah.
Well, that's great, I appreciate it. Folks, one, what I want to say initially here is, I'm not gonna be seating, seated this evening, because I've sort of got a psychiatric condition that makes it difficult for me to sit down, so it's very uncomfortable, I'm not gonna sit, so I hope you just bear with me. Look, behind every success story, there's a support story, and so, what I want to do this evening is I want to acknowledge Lindsay, Justice, my son, and Clarity, my daughter, who could not be with us this evening, they're winding down the school year, and so they're at home working on all sorts of special projects, but I usually do quite well when they're with me, so I'm just gonna have to do my best, but I want to acknowledge them. My name is Ali Cooper, I've spent twenty years, the better part of twenty years is a community organizer, working with all sorts of constituencies and neighborhoods all across this state, bringing folks together to understand that in fact, democracy works, but what we have to do as neighbors is we have to, in fact, come together, have meaningful dialogue, and challenge the status quo, challenge elected leadership to deliver the sort of democracy that we deserve. Now, this election, twenty-fourteen, is a defining moment for how we move Sacramento forward, okay? And so, let's talk about this, there are two candidates before you with two very different visions of what role you play in government, and what role government plays in your lives, okay? Make no mistake about that. I believe that over the course of the last couple of years, we've had a city council that by and large have catered to the wealthy and the well-connected. We've had a city council that by and large has moved a developer program and not a community interest program. We've had a city council by and large who have taken an enormous amount of contributions from special interest groups. Most recently, my opponent took, or an independent expenditure was opened up on behalf of him by Walmart, the Chamber of Commerce, the King's Developers, and a whole bunch of other folks who are more interested in moving a development program rather than a community interest program. And so, I think that this strikes at the heart of what's... And so I think that this strikes at the heart of what's wrong with our democracy, not just in Sacramento, not just in the city, but at the state, and most certainly at the federal level. So this is an election about whether or not, as a community, we're going to come back and we're going to say, look, the city of Sacramento belongs to neighborhoods. The city of Sacramento doesn't belong to just the wealthy and well-connected, the developers. So this campaign is a defining moment about whether or not we're going to promote our community interest. Now, with that said, I know we, we're, we've got to sort of allow time for my opponent to speak as well, but we, I, I hope this evening, that as I lay out the broad theme of what this election is about, we can talk specifically and substantively in a meaningful way about what my vision is, what sort of programs I believe that are in the best interest of this community, and how we move the community forward versus, versus, you know, the, the alternative. So with that in mind, I, again, I could talk about what our jobs program is going to look like, what our community program is going to look like to eliminate blight, we could talk more about what our youth program is going to look like to put young people on a path to a good prosperous life versus a path to the prison industrial complex, we could talk more about the role local government plays in helping our local public schools succeed. Those are all things that should be on the conference, should be on the table this evening for conversation, and we ought to have that open dialogue. I'm committed as a community organizer to bring all of us in this room together and reclaim our democracy and say, look, democracy belongs to the neighborhoods, it doesn't belong just to the wealthy, well-connected. So thank you so much.
So, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I think you all know me fairly well. I mean, I've been coming to these meetings for about three and a half years, the time I've been on the council. We've talked a lot about what we've done together in Oak Park, which has been really very, very consequential for the neighborhood. And I've said repeatedly how there's more energy in this neighborhood than any of the other twenty neighborhoods or so that I represent. And it's always exciting to be here. What I want to do is start very briefly about kind of what we've done, where we are, and why I'm running again, because I think that's important. And I look forward to going into specifics on all of the issues that, that Mr. Cooper mentioned. I think those are all very important for you, for your families, for this community, and for the city as a whole. So when I ran three and a half, four years ago, I spent a lot of time in the neighborhoods, and I think I got a really good feel for what was important to the neighborhoods. But coming into the council in kind of the last few years of the recession, basically what we did was cut. We did lay off police, we did close fire stations or have brownouts in fire stations, we closed community centers. None of that helped the communities, but it was really just a financial necessity because we didn't have the funds. And we were no different than the school district, than the county, than other municipalities all around. Fortunately, that's begun to turn around, right? But even, I want to say, as we were doing that, as we were laying off some ninety to a hundred million dollars worth of goods and services and programs and individuals, and about nine hundred employees, we were still trying to put the pieces back together for the city. And during that time, the councils made a lot of really difficult decisions, and they've impacted you, both on the negative side and on the positive side. We put together a program that starts rebuilding our city water sewer, water treatment plant infrastructure. That was a hard decision in selling three hundred and fifty million dollars worth of bonds, but it was something that we had to do. We've rebuilt city departments to the point where I think our services are becoming more customer-friendly, where we're doing a better job serving your needs. We've gotten finally to the point where we actually have a budget surplus this year of about two million dollars. So even though we were cutting, we still put additional dollars into our reserve. The financial markets looked kindly on us, raised our bond rating because of that action, and we saved about a million dollars when we went out to sell those water and sewer bonds. So even as we were cutting, I think we were doing responsible things as a council to move the city forward. There's a lot going on in Sacramento, as we know, and I think the next five years are going to be some of the most exciting years that we've had in the history of the city. And I think what's going on in Oak Park is really indicative of what's happening in the whole city. We'll definitely do the downtown development. I mean, the council will vote on that on the thirteenth. I believe demolition will start on the fourteenth. But the arena goes forward, the downtown development goes forward with or without me. That's not why I'm running. I think I added value to that conversation and will continue to do it. I think I've added value to the budget discussions and a lot of other discussions that we've had along the way. But the reason I ran three and a half years ago was really around youth and neighborhoods and homeless issues. And that's where I think, and want my voice to be strongest, as we move forward. I will play a role in all of the other pieces as we move forward with the city, but those are the issues that I think are most important. Those are the issues that really say something about who we are as a community, and those are the issues that we just have to get right if we're going to be successful for the long term. So that's why I'm running again, and I look forward to the discussion, I look forward to all of your questions. I know they'll be difficult, and I hope they are, because that's what you deserve. Thank you.
So my first question for you both is in regards to crime. What innovative strategies would you support to prevent violence? What can a council member realistically do to combat the problems that accompany drugs in a neighborhood? And what's the relationship between police and your position as a city council member? So would anyone like to take that first?
Sure, I'll, I'll take it first. Well, look, there are a couple of things that we've got to do to address crime in our neighborhood. The first thing we've got to recognize is that it's bigger than just putting more police officers on the street. Now, I agree with virtually everybody in this room that because of the economic crisis, the police department, city staff, products and services took a huge hit. I agree that we've got to put more police on the street, and I'm committed to making certain that we put more police on the street. But make no mistake about it, fixing crime, the response of fixing crime is not militarizing the police. The response to fixing crime is ensuring that we have healthy communities. Healthy communities mean that we have great opportunities for young people to have mentorship opportunities, to make certain that young people are plugged into, if you will, positive learning, enriching environments, so that they're in fact not moving toward, toward a path of, of poor judgment, poor behavior. So that's, so we've got to support our local schools. We can support our local schools by partnering, partnering up with the school district to create what I'm calling a six-to-six program, where school, this is a before and after-school program. Schools open at six AM, they close at six PM. We take children from our neighborhoods, we keep them in enriching learning environments with mentors, and making certain that we're supporting their success, and that's number one. Secondly, we've got to also understand what the, where crime is coming from. Oftentimes, crime is coming from, in addition of poor role models and, you know, poor role models, it's also coming from a place of hopelessness and despair. So we've got to make certain that we have a true jobs program in our communities. We've got to make certain that folks in our communities, young people, rather, you are, have no skills, low skills, medium skills, that you are pipelined, if you will, into a, a job that provides some degree of self-sufficiency, self-sustainability, so that you in fact have pride in your community, pride in the work that you're doing. And so we've got to talk about a jobs program, and I'm happy to talk about at least the three industry sectors that I'd like to see us grow and invest general fund dollars in growing, in, in terms of those jobs. Now, the other thing we've got to do is we've got to make sure that we're investing in community-based policing. So we've got, we've got to also invest in programs like ceasefire, where we're identifying at the root source in our community, where the problems are, we're linking those individuals in our community who are causing the problems with real opportunities other than, other than a lack of crime. So that means bringing together community stakeholders, that means bringing together folks in the academic, the education community, that means bringing folks together in the faith community, that means the entire community coming together and ensuring that we provide alternative ways and alternative lifestyles other than crime for young people who are hopeless and feel despair, and feel that there are no other alternative options for them. So it's very comprehensive, it's not as, as easy as, well, I'm going to put more cops on the streets. We've got to have a better support for our public schools, we've got to make certain that our, our police are in our communities in a meaningful way, that they're partnering with communities, and invest in that, and that means that ceasefire program as well, and we've got to make certain that we've got a true program to get folks in the community who are underemployed, unemployed, into jobs, so that they're working and being productive folks in their communities.
Right, so let's talk about police for a minute. First of all, I will tell you that the council has no role in choosing the police captain, and there were people actually from Oak Park that I asked to sit on the hiring committee, and their recommendations were largely ignored. The police chief is appointed by the city manager without really consultation with those who are elected to represent you. So that's one thing. We have put more police on the street, and that's because of you, because of measure U passing, that's eighty-seven more police. Now, as you heard from a police officer a little bit earlier, it takes quite a while to move people through the academy, get their experience, and get out on the street, but we are moving forward on that. The other thing that we're doing, and this answers Jones' question a little bit, is we're not coming back with pop officers. Again, this is not something we can control as a council, but what we've worked out, and what we've worked out with the SPOA, the Police Officers Association, is that we will now have two years where patrol officers will be in a specific neighborhood. So they will have the opportunity to get to know the neighborhood before they could be transferred at any time, or they could opt out at any time. So now, the people and police officers who will be in Oak Park will stay in Oak Park. I think we need to continue, we're way below the national off, the national average in police officers on the street, or police officers per one thousand, we're about half of what's recommended, so we need to continue to improve that. But we won't police our way out of these situations that Tamika talked about, we know that. So I want to give you some very, some specifics that we've talked about, that I've talked about before, about what we're doing on that. One is, we are partnering this with the schools, and my office is partnering with the schools. Over the last three years, including this summer, we'll have had a thousand high school students in our youth leadership camp, that's that. It's alright. I think it's going to be hard, and I'm happy for people not to clap so we can get all through all these things, but up to you. So we've, we've had over a thousand high school students from nine high schools go through our youth leadership camp. It's three hundred and fifty a year. I raise that money privately, because the city doesn't have the money to do that. I wish the city had enough money to do what our young people need and what our neighborhoods need. Unfortunately, we don't. And we'll continue to do that. What we do is we take eighty-five of the three hundred and fifty every year, we take them to an advanced leadership class up in the mountains, where they do school plans. And then we send people out to work with them at their school sites to implement those plans. A lot of that's around anti-drugs, anti-bullying, things like that. So the kids are very much involved in trying to chart their own course, and we do a lot of work with them about what their futures will look like, about what they need to do to be successful. We've also started a program called Summer at City Hall, where the first year we had thirty kids, the next year we had sixty, last year we had close to eighty, we'll have eighty every year. And that's a six-week program for tenth and eleventh graders. The first one I talked about was for incoming ninth graders. This is tenth and eleventh graders, where we take, again, from nine high schools, we take young people, they do a six-week course in the morning, they get high school credit, they get five units of high school credit, it's a partnership with SAC City Unified, they supply the teachers, and then they do an internship in the afternoon to get real-world experience, they do that in a city department. So that, and they get a stipend of three hundred dollars after, after the six weeks. Again, we've gone from thirty to sixty to eighty kids, eighty is kind of our maximum, just because of the physical space of City Hall. I love having these young people run around City Hall for six weeks, it's a culture changer there. It also allows us to really understand why we're doing this. For the first two years, I raised the money, again, privately, we wrote state grants for that. This year, we've moved it into the city budget, so it's now becoming a city program, it's run by the Neighborhood Services Department with our help, so that we can institutionalize it. I also think early on, it's important to give young people an idea of what their futures could look like. So what we're doing, and this is through our Way Up Initiative in Oak Park, every year, we're taking a hundred and twenty-five fourth graders to UC Med Center to look at what careers in health will look like. So we have people from UC Med come out to their school sites, they do a lesson there, the kids go to UC Med, they do a full day there, they're exposed to what the thousand careers in health might look like, and then there's follow-up back at their schools. So, you know, with all respect, I think it's really easy to talk about a lot of programs. What we've done is, and what I've done, is delivered over the last three years, actual programming for young people to get out there. These are not easy things to fund. I've raised about a million four hundred thousand dollars privately over the last three years, and I've done that primarily because I don't think we can wait. We can't wait for the government to have enough money to do this type of programming. Our kids can't wait, and so we're going to continue to do that and to run those programs. Now, we've been successful with our leadership camp, where the school district is now beginning to take it over. That's how we'll institutionalize that and move it forward. So that's where I am, and happy to talk about other issues.
Well, just really quick, so you spoke a lot a bit about the youth, but also, a lot of the crime is of people who are adults. So what kinds of ideas do you have to help get people out of the lack of crime into a more productive lifestyle?
So, it's a difficult thing, obviously, as we all know. I will tell you one thing that we've done and that we're doing through the downtown development and the arena project, which is a good example of what we can do if we're a little bit smarter. I used to sit on the board of NCCT, which is a construction trades organization. They teach individuals, many of whom are coming out of the prison system, how to be construction workers or how to work in the trades. We have signed a deal with the King's ownership, where we'll have three hundred, we'll have three hundred apprenticeships for the construction that's going to go on, it's about forty-five hundred construction jobs over the next few years as we build the arena. Three hundred of those will be apprenticeships, at least seventy of those will come from three neighborhoods, Oak Park, Meadowview, and Del Paso. So we're really trying to reach out, working with NCCT and actually working with the Urban League, they're our other partner, to get those apprentices in the program. So that's one example of something that we can do. This is very difficult, I think that as the economy comes back, things will get a little bit easier, and we're seeing some of that as well.
Do you want to touch on that?
Sure, well, I think, I, and I appreciate, I, I'd like to respond to all the, what I would characterize as very good work that Mr. Shanier is doing with his private ventures. It's noble work, it's good work, but I think this is where he and I sort of differ in what role government plays. When I heard Mr. Shanier say multiple times, gee, I'd love to see government have the money to be able to do this stuff, you know, I raised this money through my private ventures, here's what we've been able to do in the city of Sacramento. We've been able to finance to the tune of nearly three hundred million dollars subsidies for billionaires to build an arena downtown, but we can't find a million dollars to continue to expand the foreign after-school programs, and the types of programs that Jay has to in fact raise from Walmart and other sort of corporations with whom then have business before the city council. And so I, I think what we've got to do is we've got to get to a place where we're having honest conversations at City Hall about how we look at the city council budget and more equitably distribute resources across our communities, so that not work, so that we are not in fact relying on the private sector to funnel money to a council member's private venture and then have business before the city council. This is inherently a problem with, with local government and decisions that are being made at, at City Hall. So look, my belief is that it creates sort of a quid pro quo situation, and don't take my work for it, take Walmart's work for it, the Kings and the, the regional builders, who've just pumped in sixty thousand dollars in an independent expenditure committee to drown out our neighborhood campaign, you know? So, so I'm, so I'm really concerned, and I take issue with that. Again, this election is about two different visions. Rather, we're going to elect folks who believe that city resources, taxpayer dollars should in fact be reinvested with our community, in the community, or rather not, those investments should come just from the private sector. And so when I hear a council member or, you know, or the mayor say, well, we just don't have the money, but then, we've got plenty money to sort of subsidize development for billionaires, that's a huge concern for me now. I'd also, I, I believe I also take issue with the, this notion that we have three hundred apprenticeships that will be set aside for the trades. Well, of course we do, those are the skilled trades crafts who are going to build the arena. We have a three hundred million dollar investment, and what I heard Mr. Shanier say is that we've got seventy... We have a three hundred million dollar investment, and what I heard Mr. Chenier say is that we've got seventy jobs slated for folks in our communities. Well, look, um, I, I know that three hundred million dollars is a lot of money, and as far as I'm concerned, I think what we ought to be doing for us, what we ought to be doing is, we ought to be advocating for far more than seventy jobs from communities with the highest unemployment rate and the most sort of underserved city services. So I think that, again, the difference is, I believe that I'd be a much stronger advocate for how we invest those dollars back into our communities. You know, uh, let me say this much, in terms of jobs today, right now, Tamika. Right now, if in fact the city is on this path of building the arena, well, you know, we're the first, we will be the first city in nearly a decade that has not negotiated what is called a site-specific community benefit agreement. A site-specific community benefit agreement is simply a policy instrument that says the community stakeholders, the developers, and the local government come together and say, okay, what are the direct investments from this particular infusion of cash for our communities? So rather, you're talking about hiring a much higher number than the seventy into jobs. Rather, you're talking about making certain that the jobs at the arena and all of peripheral development that may exist at the arena are jobs that pay a living wage, that get people on a path of self-sufficiency. Those are the types of, those are the types of policy instruments that we could move if we had a far more aggressive, thoughtful council that in fact was interested in not just shifting the subsidy, but making certain that the outcome of that subsidy was shared prosperity for our neighborhoods. So that, I have issue with that. I think many Sacramentoans have issue with that. And what I don't hear seven council members talking about is that very issue.
Alright, thank you.
So let's talk about the arena for a minute. So let's start with the financing of the arena, because I think it's very different. We are putting funds into the arena. We're putting, as a start, two hundred, not as a start, but we're putting two hundred and twenty-three million dollars in cash in the arena. The place that's coming from is selling revenue bonds against future parking revenues. So it's not tax dollars coming into this, it's not replacing other things we can do. Those funds, uh, and those, that investment needs to have a payoff, so we can pay back those bonds. So it's not like that money could be used for the homeless, for after-school programs, for anything else. We have to find other dollars for that. And every other dollar that we put into a new program means we're cutting a dollar someplace else. So I want us to be very realistic when we talk about new programming of where that money is gonna come from. I think that's really important. I said seventy apprenticeships are coming, at least from these areas, three hundred apprenticeships total. But that's not the number of jobs. The number of jobs between the arena and the ancillary development is probably somewhere around eleven thousand. Sixty percent of that, by agreement, is with the lo- is localities here in the region here. We're about seventy-one percent of contracts signed so far. So I have a lot of confidence that, particularly for the construction trades, which is our middle class, which is what we've been losing. But for the construction trades, which have somewhere around a forty percent unemployment rate, we're gonna do very, very well. So I feel confident in what we're doing moving forward. Now, I agree with Mr. Cooper around the jobs that will come through the ancillary development. We don't have a community benefit agreement negotiated yet. I think it's a little bit premature on some of it, because there's no proposal, or specific proposal, of what's gonna be built. There are no pro formas, things like that. The, we have, um, there was a movement to make the ancillary development, the hotel that they want to build, other things that they want to build, subject to approval only by the planning commissioner. I and a couple of other of my colleagues decided, we can't do that, we need to go through our current process, so that the opportunity comes back before the council. I firmly believe, and I've had discussions with the ownership of the Kings, as well as, as some of my colleagues, that particularly around the hotel, which is looking for its ability to be a union hotel, to have those wages, that will happen. That's my commitment, and I'll stick to that, and I believe that there's a majority on the council. The question right now is timing, and how do we move forward on that?
Sure, absolutely. Look, I, um, here, here's what I'd say about this, and, and I think Mr. Chenier started off with, well, you know, the financing plan. So let's be clear. There is currently litigation making its way through the Superior Court here in Sacramento, with challenges whether or not the city in fact has undervalued land, undervalued parking structures, digital signs. That's not my point. My point is that, in the course of that litigation, the deputy city manager, Jean Denver, was deposed. And in that deposition, it's public record, he admitted, the city had never conducted an economic analysis report on the arena. So to have our elected representatives say, well, the financing is sound, well, I'm, that's very questionable to me, when in fact the deputy city manager has testified under oath that we'd never conducted an economic analysis report. Now, look, I want to be clear. I support downtown development, I support an arena deal. I support all sorts of downtown development that catalyze and bring in more jobs. But make no mistake about it, as a ratepayer, as a taxpayer, and as an elected member of the city council, it's our fiduciary duty to ensure that you're showing us every penny, that we know what the investment is, and that we have a better sense of what our risk assumptions are. And right now, it is just not very genuine to say that we know that. It's just not. The court records show it's not.
So we have rewritten the zoning codes, we've rewritten the parking codes, we've put a lot online. We're trying to get a lot more customer-friendly. So within the city, I think we're trying to be more friendly. What I would love to see is an OMSBUDS person within the city planning department, within the city building department, who is solely about small business. Our economic development department for the city has gone from a high of twenty-two people down to about six right now. That's something that we have to build back if we're gonna be successful. Personally, in Oak Park, we've tried to help a number of small businesses that have opened their doors here. Around this area, Arthur Henry's, we spent a lot of time working with them. Everything from moving the bus stop down the block so it didn't get in their way, to a number of other code pieces that they had. Should they have had to spend fifty thousand dollars to put a new fire hydrant, uh, right in front of their store. So things like that. We're working with the Oak Park Brewery to make sure their process goes well. We worked quite a bit with the food bank when they built their new building, because there were some ridiculous things, I think, that the city wanted to require, that were preventing them from doing the work that they were doing. And we worked most significantly, I think, with Ron Verlocas around the Triangle Project. That project was the last piece of redevelopment dollars that we had. We were very, very close to losing it. We worked very hard to make sure that we kept it, working both with the redevelopment agency, as it was and is now, and working with the city to make sure that happened. That'll have seven retail shops, twenty-nine, uh, living spaces in it. So, that, those small businesses that we see coming in, that we can aid, we're absolutely out there trying to make it easier for them with the city department. We have to systematize and institutionalize that within the city, so that we are very friendly to small business. On a slightly larger scale, we have a vision, I have a vision, of creating a medical innovation zone along Stockton Boulevard. Now, here's the deal. UC Med Center is one of the five largest recipients of federal grant funds in the nation. We see very little about, of that, as far as jobs go in the city. The walls at UC Med are pretty high, and it doesn't come out. I lived in Austin for a while, and from the graduate school in Austin, from the research going on at the university, you could basically draw a line to entrepreneurial activity and new jobs. So we're trying to do the same thing with UC Med Center. We have partnered with them. Uh, I've also partnered, and this is because we don't have enough funds to do this on our own. We've partnered with the UC Davis Graduate School of Management and the MBA class at Drexel. So we've gotten a lot of free labor from these, these students, and it's benefiting them as well, because it's a real-life project, to see how we can take Stockton Boulevard with UC Davis Med Center, create technology transfer, and create entrepreneurial activity in biotech, biomed, and telehealth. Three things that Sacramento leads the nation in. We're in the top three to five cities in all of those areas in the country. And then, at the same time, what we're doing is, we're working with SAC City Unified through their Link Learning Program. We're working with Los Rios, with Brian King, the chancellor, and we're working with Alex Gonzalez at SAC State, because it does us no good if we can create this med zone and, and the development that will come with it. And we're importing people from other cities to do the work. That's the last thing we want to do. We need to grow our own, and we need, and this is why I said before, we take all the fourth graders, about a hundred and twenty-five a year, to UC Med Center. We want to get them to start thinking about careers in health early on. We have supported, we brought the National Academy Foundation in to work with, uh, with the medical academy, the Health Academy at Hiram Johnson High School, where a lot of people, a lot of kids from, from Oak Park go. And then again, we're working with Los Rios and SAC State, because we need to make sure that as we create jobs, and we create the demand for an educated workforce, we have that educated workforce, and we're growing our own. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Huge, huge issue, huge issue for here in Oak Park. And what I thought I heard the question of is, what are we doing to stimulate job growth here in Oak Park, for folks that live here in Oak Park? There's, there's a great deal we've got to do. Look, I support this notion that we've got to ease regulations and support small businesses. You know, every elected official talks about that. Great, I support that. But let's be clear about this. Your statistic was that we've got a whole lot of folks making, you know, minimum wage, a little above minimum wage jobs. So while I support small businesses, we've got to get to a place where in fact we're creating jobs that create a living wage, jobs that create more self-sufficiency, so in fact we've got more homeownership in Oak Park, so in fact we've got more folks invested in this community. So, uh, a med, a tech zone, a med zone, I, sounds great, I think it's great. I most certainly would support a med zone. But what I really hear is a geographic zone wherein labs would be built, and we'll subsidize some more building for developers. What I did not hear, and I now talk about, sort of my program for three types of areas that we should focus on, but what I did not hear is an actual pipeline where we're recruiting folks from the neighborhood, matriculating through job training programs, and getting them on a career ladder, so that, again, they're self-sufficient. So, three areas. So we talk about, uh, the healthcare industry, uh, and medical sciences in Sacramento. The city ought to, uh, the city ought to, in fact, be working to invest general fund dollars in the same sorts of pre-apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs that we see in the construction trades. We should have those same sort of pre-apprenticeship and construction, or pre-apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs in the medical sciences field, where we're identifying folks from the community, getting them trained up, staffed up, so that in fact they're qualified to work in that industry. We ought to do it in clean energies and green industries as well. You know, two thousand eight, Sacramento elected a mayor. The mayor had this great vision for creating the greenest city in America. And look, it's a great slogan, but if you're not investing the dollars in it, it's not real. You know, what we ought to do is, we ought to take ten million dollars from the general fund, you ought to take that money, and you ought to create green jobs. You ought to create a, 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 a demand for green jobs. But what does that look like? Well, I think what you do is, you take money, you invest in training young people, people from our community, low-skilled, medium-skilled adults into a couple of different types of jobs. Rather, you're training them to be energy auditors, rather you're training them in one of the apprenticeship programs around weatherization, so the folks are doing weatherization and solar installation in people's homes. And, well, where are folks getting the funds to go to solar and go clean, green energy? Well, guess what? The city ought to create grant programs that allow homeowners to weatherproof their homes, to turn their homes to solar. This is not a new concept. This is a concept that's done very well in other municipalities and regions across the country. Chicago does it very well. The reason we're not doing it so well in Sacramento is because we're not having a conversation about it. We're having a conversation about shifting, again, subsidies to billionaires. Now, look, here's what I'd say about the other piece about, uh, uh, the jobs. The other, uh, industry, the other sort of piece for young people particularly. Look, um, you walk from block to block, rather you're north Oak Park, central Oak Park, south Oak Park. You can walk block to block, and what do we see? We see nuisance properties, we see trash and debris on the street, we see graffiti, broken glass, overgrown vegetation, alleys that aren't maintained, and we see a whole lot of young people without opportunities. So look, one of the things that I think we absolutely ought to be doing is creating an environmental stewardship program for young people. Making certain that we have fifteen-year-olds to nineteen-year-olds who are spending Saturdays in a learning environment, learning more about what it means to be green, more about what it means to be an environmental steward. And then, being stipend, rather it's ten, twelve, thirteen dollars an hour to physically go out and pick up the trash. You know, I was out, out walking, canvassing the neighborhood, and I saw all sorts of debris all over the place. And you know what I saw? I saw city trucks just driving right past. And so a whole bunch of young people sort of standing on the corner, just hanging out. We've got to move and be very thoughtful and elevate the conversation about what equitable services look like in our communities, and how you invest in young people to go to work and clean that stuff up. Simple to me.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, and, you know, so I'm interested where the ten million dollars come from, where the money through your sixty-six program. What do you, what do you cut to get?
Absolutely, there, I don't think you have to cut anything. I think what you have to do is you have to be thoughtful about shifting subsidies. Let me give you an example of this. How many of us in this room know that part of the financing plan for the arena is either capitalizing parking revenues or taking parking revenues that are coming into the city and shifting those into paying the debt on the arena? Gee, if we've got revenues coming in from parking structures, it seems to me that's revenue, that's cash positive revenue. We should invest those cash positive revenues into generating good jobs, into generating cleaning up light in our neighborhoods, into putting young people to work. So there is money on the table, the city generates revenues. What we have now is, we have a city council beholden to corporate special interests and downtown developers who say, well, wait a minute. I know all that's important, but if you just build us a big shiny new building, we can create a whole bunch of restaurants, and we can build a whole bunch of retail, and guess what? We'll have more low-wage retail jobs. We've got to have a different vision for Sacramento. So when you ask me, well, where's the money come from? Clearly, we have found out through some very smart financing mechanism that we can shift nearly three hundred billion dollars, or three hundred million dollars in subsidies to developers. We've got to be thoughtful on our approach in creating jobs in the community and cleaning up light.
So, I just want to be really clear about the funds for the arena. If, they're not funds that can be used for other things. If we want to borrow against it...
Why, why is that?
I said, because those funds have to be an investment that pay off the bonds, a lot of what...
Who decides that?
What, do you want to let me finish?
I, I'm curious, yes, I will.
Yeah, the city, the city makes the decision, the council makes that decision, that's why we're elected, to make those decisions. And it's very, you know, you need those funds to pay it off. Now, I think that there will be funds coming back out of this project. There will be jobs that will increase our tax base. If we want to provide the supports and services that we need over time, that you deserve, that people in the communities deserve, we need to grow our tax base. We need to have more taxes so we can pay for a community center, so we can pay for police and fire. And that's about jobs. I think eleven thousand jobs coming out of this is gonna be a great boon to the city. I think it's an investment that we make, and I feel very comfortable with our city treasurer, who is incredibly conservative, and the runs that he's made on what this will do. This will not impact taxes, it will not impact the amount of money coming out of the parking for the general fund. That was a, a earlier plan, and we've been able to change that, so that doesn't happen. So I think it's a good investment, and it's an investment for the future of the city. I also think that had we not done this, um, had we not done this, we would have lost thousands of jobs. Three hundred at the arena had the Kings moved, plus the jobs that are around that that feed it. And I think that's, that's not really a workable solution. Had we not done this, downtown would continue to die. I think to be a vibrant city, we need a vibrant downtown. I have two kids in college, I want them to come back to Sacramento to live here, and part of that is having a vibrant city. We need to have action going on downtown. This is a way to do it. There's no more redevelopment dollars from the state. Absent this investment, absent the about seven hundred and fifty million that the investors are putting in, the ownership group of the arena are putting in, none of this happens. We lose the, we lose the Kings, we lose the arena, um, and, and downtown continues to die. And I think that's an unacceptable solution.
So, you got this?
Um, no, no, that's okay. I promised I wouldn't, I promised I wouldn't, no, I promised I wouldn't.
Look, I, 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 I want to say that, a lesson in a minute, thirty seconds. Mr. Chenier proves my point. It's a matter of choice in the priorities. The choice is to shift subsidies to billionaires, not to our neighborhoods. It's real clear to me. He's very transparent about that.
Okay, that's not the choice.
So, bringing it back to Oak Park, and, and, um, the development and redevelopment here in Oak Park, including infill, it appears that developers frequently have too much power in deciding what projects get accepted to build. What is your relationship with the development community in terms of fundraising, campaign endorsements, and personal connections? Again, these questions come from you all. And, um, second question, when you're weighing a planner's recommendations with developer clout, what priorities will guide your decision-making? Let's start with that.
Uh, look, I, I believe developers are wonderful people. I believe that, uh, a, a community needs developers, in fact, to continue to help generate the economy. There's no doubt, look, this is not about whether or not we dislike developers, or developers are not a productive, are in play a productive role in our community. This is about equity. This is about whether or not, in fact, the halls of City Hall are dominated by special interest groups that continue to finance the coffers of campaigns. I know this very clearly. I'm a candidate for City Council, I'm running a very grassroots campaign, and I'm being outspit nearly ten to one by development interests. Again, development interests, the Kings... Again, development interests, the Kings, our region builders, and a whole bunch of other developers, in addition to financing my opponent's campaign directly, have opened up what I liken to a super PAC at the tune of nearly $60,000. I'll never raise that money, folks in this room will never raise that money. We've got to reclaim our democracy at City Hall. And one of the ways that we reclaim our democracy at City Hall is we don't say the develop, we don't demonize developers, but what we do say is, you know what? That's not the sort of leadership we want at City Hall. We want a leadership that's more beholden to public interest, not necessarily those to corporate special interests, and that's what we're seeing now.
So, let me address a couple of those pieces. One is, I have not asked nor taken money from the Kings on this campaign, I have not asked nor taken money from Walmart on the campaign. Walmart has, and many of you know because this has been an issue, given to Way Up. It's a behest payment where I have, we have competed for grants with Walmart, we've gotten $55,000. That money has gone to fund both community gardens in Oak Park and to fund our youth leadership program. So I want to be really clear, Mr. Cooper refers to this as my private venture, this is a public nonprofit, we, we have posted and shared every dollar that's come in and every dollar that's come out where it's going. Personally, I don't get a dollar out of this, this is not benefiting me, it's really benefiting this community primarily. So I want to start with that. We also keep talking about the independent expenditure campaign. By law, I have no connection to that whatsoever. There's a number of organizations and individuals who've chosen to put money in to, to back or support my reelection. I haven't talked to them, I did not know it was happening. I hope they stay positive, as opposed to an independent expenditure campaign for Mr. Cooper that's already sent out one hit piece on me. So, you know, that's where we are. I'm going to continue to raise money. I have a good relationship with developers. I have great relationships with police and fire, they support me. I have great relationships with the building trades, they support me. I have great relationships with individuals, from a $15 check that I got yesterday, up to people maxing out on the individual maximum that they can do for my campaign. I'm proud of the diversity of the people who have given to me, both in my prior campaign and this campaign. I don't think, and I want to answer your question really specifically, it doesn't buy access any more than anyone else. I've been walking, as Mr. Cooper has, probably since January or so, knocking on doors, I leave my cellphone number with everyone I talk to. Every single person I knock on their door, I leave my cellphone number and say, please feel free to call. And a lot did. When people call, you know, I think Michael and others have seen me at Old Soul on weekends, when people call and say, I'd like to meet with you, whoever they are, they have access. I work for you guys, that access is there regardless. So I want to have great relationships with developers, because I think that they drive a lot of business here in Sacramento. I want to have great develop, great relationships with the building trades, and with organized labor, and with any other people who want to support me and have, share the core values and the vision that I have for this city, and I'll continue to do so.
Look, I, I, I want to respond to something that is unbeknownst to me. One, I am, the, the campaign disclosure rules require that in fact, if an independent expenditure has been opened on behalf or opposing a particular candidate, that you're notified. So I want to make certain that, that we're clear, I have never been notified, and it is patently false, that there's any independent expenditure out there who's casting Mr. Chenere in some negative light associated with my campaign. If there, if there is, and I've broken a campaign rule, and I don't think I've done that, so that, let's be very clear about that, there's, there is no independent expenditure out there. Certainly, so one, there's no independent expenditure, and secondly, I want to make very clear that I don't begrudge, and I don't in any way disparage, the good work that Way Up has done in the community. Way Up is doing great work in the community, this, this is not about whether or not Way Up does good work in the community. This is about whether or not, in the seat of Sacramento, we're going to continue to perpetuate a system wherein corporations, in fact, can give gifts to private pictures of a sitting politician. Now rather, Mr. Chenere wants to say it's not a private picture, he's not making any money, the point is, is that they're built, I have spent 18, 19 years in political community organizing, I understand and I'm qualified to speak about political operations. And by and large, there are two forces that perpetuate sort of this behavior, that's either business folks or, or labor folks. So, these contributions, and so it's very disingenuous to say, well, these contributions don't buy access. Well, I, I, I've got a question, well then, if that's the case, let's look at your calendar, let's look at your emails, let's have a public information request, let's look, let's just, let's sort of open up who's got access to City Hall. I think that's a fair question.
How long is this back and forth going to go on? I'm, I'm bored. I, I didn't, I didn't come last month, I don't know who you are. Who are you? Where are you?
I'm sorry, did you, uh, did you arrive at the beginning? We had, we had introductions, my name's Ali Cooper, I'm running for City Council, thanks for coming out this evening.
Where do you live?
I was born in Saigon, I'm a war baby, I was born in Saigon, my...
Where do you live?
I, I live on the outskirts of Curtis Park, I live in no man's land between Curtis Park and Land Park.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, did she have a question?
I'm sorry, hold on, yeah, we need to have, our... Oh, that's what we did, babe. So, let me just throw away for anybody who's given without, with, with the expectation that this would be a regular open A meeting. We have invited these two gentlemen here because they are running for our District Five City Council, this is Jay Chenere, and that is...
I know, I know.
Okay. And so what we want to do is we want to give them a chance, because maybe you don't know Jay, maybe you don't know Ali, maybe you don't know what they're about. So this is an opportunity for them to come and give their case to you guys, and we are making available any specific, any specific questions you have for them, you are welcome to put on the website and they can, they can answer those directly.
But, I, you don't know him.
So...
That's why he's here.
So, hold on, hold on, everyone, silence. Sorry, I'm a teacher.
Sorry.
So, and I don't, I don't always look down. So, um, so we, we do have just a few more minutes left of this discussion, and I do want to give both of you an opportunity to wrap up a couple of little things, but yeah, we're not going to just come on. There is a really good question that we have left. I think we did. All right, so, we are going to continue. Thank you, and if you do have something to say, please write it down so that we do not have to take more time away from their discussion. Thank you.
June 3rd, thank you, David, yeah, great. I wouldn't want to be a pedro class, I don't... June 3rd is the election, so you've still got time to learn more, this is not meant to answer every question, it's meant to give you an introduction and answer some questions, and get a sense of where, like you said, two different points of view, two different visions. So, Oak Park has been, I'll read this because I'm trying to be fair to what the other people were asking. Oak Park has been stigmatized as a ghetto. What will you do to foster community pride, togetherness, and revitalize the neighborhoods? And another part of this is, what have you done that specifically benefits the Oak Park neighborhood and residents? I think it's...
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter, we can...
Obviously directed to Jay, but...
Is it your turn, Alan?
Not, I mean, you know, Jay can... So, I've been coming to this neighborhood, well, I worked at the food bank for a couple of years before, so I spent a lot of time in Oak Park then. Since the election, I, I would say that I've spent probably 40% of my time that are on neighborhood issues in Oak Park. I represent over 20 neighborhoods, but this has been the one where we've really made an investment of time and resources. We handed out a sheet that's over here, it looks like this, shows about $14 million worth of investment, that comes both from the city and private sources that I've raised funds from, that have gone into this neighborhood. Let's just talk about the last week. On Saturday, we dedicated McClatchy Park, or rededicated a groundbreaking at McClatchy Park, $2.8 million in estate bond that we fought for and received. A new skate park, new basketball and tennis courts, a children's playground that will be, I, I think, the nicest children's playground in the city of Sacramento, a jogging track and new infrastructure for the park. Saturday morning, we also dedicated the Oak Park Soul Community Garden on Broadway and 38th. That came out of something that we started immediately, where when we got elected, when I got elected, we sent out a letter to people saying, if you have a vacant property, can we build a community garden on it? It's a 50 by 250-foot privately owned piece of land that has been ceded over for this garden, Oak Park Soul has been doing it. We've put, I think, close to $10,000 into that garden to make it work. It's been community-run and it's community-owned. This morning, we did an installation of our first of 10 kind of art bike racks over at McClatchy Park. If you haven't seen it, you should go over and look at it, it's really cool. We found about $50,000 in old capital improvement funds from 2006, it's money that can only be spent on facilities, and we use that to run a program to select an artist who's doing District Five bike racks. Healthy eating and arts come together in Oak Park. I've talked about the Triangle Project, I've talked about Oak Park Brewery, we're trying to do it on the jobs front, and then we're also trying to do it on the human capital front. We're currently running a 100% cover campaign, where we're actually going out to all the elementary school kids who are from Oak Park. Many of them are getting screened for medical, we've done about 296 screenings so far, and then we're enrolling them in medical coverage, because we know how important it is. So, we're working with two partners, Well Space Clinic, which is right out front here, turned around, over there, and also Sacramento Cover. So we're running lots of different programs, we're working with Keith B. Kenny, we're working with Brett Hart, which is in Curtis Park, but it's basically Oak Park kids, except for my kids who went there. We're working with PS7, we're working with Capitol Heights Academy, and we're working with Obridge Elementary. So those five schools, which I might say, as a cluster of elementary schools, are one of the highest-scoring clusters of schools in the county, and we should be really proud of that, because people don't believe it, but they're doing great. So if you talk about what we're doing, those are some of the things we've done, this piece of paper kind of lists a lot of other things. What we're really involved with right now, we're trying to partner with Neighbor Works, Nehemiah, and some others, there's 156 vacant homes here in Oak Park that are currently in the system of the city, that are code enforcement homes. They're all vacant, they're all boarded up, they all cause problems. We, we have some ideas with these partners, we've also enrolled McGeorge, who are going to do all the legal work pro bono, to make sure we can get these homes off of the rolls of the city. Many of them have been vacant for 10 years. We don't have a lot of the tools that we need, but we think we're getting better at figuring out what we did, or what we need to do. In talking to the city manager, we have two more positions coming into our Justice for Neighbors program in the city to work specifically on those 156 homes. Now, the economy is helping a little bit, Sam Allen, who's one of the people that comes to many of these meetings, one of the real estate people for this neighborhood, is actually working on a couple of those homes. And a lot of them, because the economy is improving, they're now in for building permits. But we need to get the ones that are very hard to get to, and make sure that those homes are rehabbed and sold back to people in the neighborhoods. We've done about nine homes that way thus far.
Thank you, Jay. And Ali.
Sure. Look, I, again, I, I want to make certain that we're very clear about the role city government plays in uplifting a community, and it really is a matter of choices and priorities. So Jay talked about a lot of really positive, positive developments that are happening here in Oak Park, and I can't dispute that, those are good things. The question here is whether or not we're going to have a city council solely focused on exponentially growing those investments into Oak Park, or if they're going to be sort of developments that are sort of cherry-picked because of the relationships that we have with either developers or folks that have behested us money. That's really the issue here, because here's what I know, I have spent a great deal of time canvassing Oak Park, talking and checking in with neighbors, and you know, it's a very typical question that you oftentimes ask if you're a candidate, a voter, or a resident, are you better off today than you were four years ago? And resoundingly, for many folks who may not live on the streets that are being gentrified here in Oak Park, resoundingly, the issue is, I'm not better off than I was 15 years ago. And don't take my word for it, drive down the streets and look at the piles of debris, look at the mattresses, look at the sofas, look at the broken glass, look at the graffiti, look at all of the young people standing on corners without opportunities. The question is, is how do we more equitably distribute resources across this city so that we're addressing those needs now? And so, and so I'm, I'm committed to working with the community to do that, again, I'm not going to, they're, they're, Jay laid out a, a very good list of things that are happening, and I believe with more committed city resources and a more focused effort in, in Oak Park, we can exponentially grow that faster if our focus was here, and again, not shifting more and more subsidies to folks with whom I believe do very well by themselves.
I think, yeah, for one second.
No, no, again...
He said something about, he said something about Oak Park, about the, about the park being redone and all the development. These kids can't speak, they, they, they're voiceless. I grew up here, this building here, I started it, Park for Recreations, community service and leadership for kids of diversity. Now, I'm just going to leave it this short, Jay, they're, they're developing the whole entire park, except for where the Little League is, they've been there for longest.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, Jay, and, and, yes, Jay, yes, Jay, they're not even playing, the guidance are not even playing. Right now, our kids are playing on, I don't even, I'm not a playing field, dangerous field.
So let me just tell you, we just delivered 12 yards of dirt, of soil for that.
Dirt? It reached the east side of the building, Jay, the whole entire garden.
Look, if you're going to challenge me, give me a chance to rebut this, right? So we, we have, no, we just, we have been working with both Little Leagues, we just raised $1,750 in 15 hours so those kids could have uniforms, because the Leagues didn't have enough money. We did that, I get personal money to do that.
We're not playing field.
Can I get there? We just, we just did 12 yards of covering for that, we're painting the, we're painting the bleachers, so we have been working with the Little Leagues to see what they need. Now, they have different ideas, there's two leagues there, and if you know, they don't get along very well. And that's it, and we have had them, you want to let me hear this?
Go ahead.
And we have had them in my office for hours and hours trying to get them to figure out how they can work together. Until they can work together, it's going to be a problem in this neighborhood. I can't control what they do, but we did, when the snack shack went down, we did get a new one built. So we have continued, we've got the bathrooms redone, there are still problems with that, there's no question about it, but we're cleaning those as often as we can. We have done a lot of work with the Little Leagues. Now, the other complaint is, what about the mounds, right? The Little Leagues, Mr. Crump says, don't do the mounds because we do something...
Jay, just let me say, we're not leveling our field, so if they play on their field something for ground ball, they don't have to catch his mask. He was speaking, it's his opportunity, I want to let you guys...
Now, let me get to the second part of the question. The second part of the question is...
He's all right, he's all right.
The second part of the question is, what have you done that specifically benefits the Oak Park neighborhood and residents, and you didn't get a chance to... Get to that question. So the question is, what has Mr. Cooper done that specifically benefited the Oak Park neighborhood and residents?
Absolutely, I think that's a, I think that's a wonderful question, and it's a very good question. The most important thing I did is announce my candidacy for City Council so that we can reclaim City Hall from the corporate developers. That, that's, I've been, I'm a community organizer, I'm out walking, talking with neighbors about the need to continue to exponentially invest in Oak Park, and the way you do that is you bring neighborhoods together, you organize folks, and you say, you know what? It's not always just about the 1%ers and all the money being trickled up, we in fact can have greater investment here in Oak Park, and we have a movement. We have a movement so much so, that, you know, it, it's, it's a threat to those developers and the Walmarts of the world, and the rest of the corporates, that's why they've opened up a super PAC to take us out.
So, I just want to just double check something, part of the question was, what have you done for Oak Park? Is that a threat specifically for Oak Park? Ali, would you like to answer that question?
I can't.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're going to give you a little time to wrap up and say, what, how, answer, say whatever you want to wrap up. The first one, oh, you've gotten hurt, people, or barely, okay, good. So, you started, I believe, Ali, so why don't Mr. Chenere, I should start with the...
Sure, so I just wanted to... So I just wanted to...
Let me just interrupt to give you where we are in this process. We kind of have to be out here at 8 o'clock so we don't keep the staff late. So when we stop at, let's say, 5, 2 or so, so take about half of that time. But then if you'll clean up...
Five minutes. Five minutes. We don't need more than five minutes.
Okay. If you'll clean up around you before you leave, that'll help a lot. So please do that. Thank you.
So...
Starting now.
To the half minutes.
Like council.
Okay.
Are you... How do you...
Like city council. Sometimes. All right. So I want to give this to Mr. Cooper. This is a piece that went out from the Central Labor Council. So if you have anything to say...
Is that an independent expenditure, Mr. Shneer?
I don't know. I don't know who paid for it.
You planned for an independent expenditure.